Good evening, everybody. Today is May the first and this is a Moscow City Regular Council Meeting. Would you all stand to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance? Thank you very much. Thank you, Jim. Now I will read a Bike Month proclamation. Whereas bicycling has been an affordable, environmentally sound mode of transportation and an excellent tool for recreation and enjoyment of Moscow's scenic beauty, and whereas 7 percent of the Moscow residents choose bicycles for their longest commutes, and many more adults here use bicycles for at least part of their commuting, and whereas local government is committed to educating motorists and cyclists about safe vehicle operations to reduce accidents, injuries, and fatalities, and whereas bicycling contributes to retail sales, tourism dollars, planning, infrastructure, and policies that support community livability, and whereas bicycling reduces heart disease, obesity, diabetes, hypertension, and improves mental health and cardiovascular fitness, and whereas Moscow supports the objectives of let's move, safer routes to school, complete streets, fill the racks, the officer new bill safety theory, and more, and whereas Moscow's Bike for Life Committee with representatives from healthcare, government, education, families, businesses, and environmental interests have coordinated a variety of very cool cycling activities around Moscow this spring and listed them on the Bike for Life website, and whereas our region is gaining favorable recognition for bicycle-friendly accommodations including Moscow's intermodal transit center, more convenient and functional bike racks, a growing network of bicycle pedestrian trails including the new Moscow Greenway, and whereas National Bike Month began in May of 1956. Now therefore I bill Lammer, the Mayor of the City of Moscow, do hereby proclaim May 2017 to be Bike Month in Moscow, and I urge everyone who can cycle to work, school, shopping, and errands, or simply for pleasure to improve health and find refreshment and invigoration to less adverse impacts of climate and to reduce transportation costs. With that, I've got Jonathan, I know Margaret's out here too, so we can present this.
So we're gonna get a photo?
Yes. Come on up, Margaret. Let's get whoever else wants to get up.
Everybody who's ever ridden a bicycle.
There you go.
Okay, Walter, here's your photobomb opportunity.
No, I don't wanna get involved.
Becky, you gotta get in front, honey, in short.
Hide behind somebody.
Becky's more decorative, put her in the front.
Yeah, she's shorter, too. Get her in front.
Margaret, I will let you speak.
Okay, well, I am Margaret Dibble. I'm on the Moscow Pathways Commission and I'm also on the LeTah Trail Foundation. I moved here in 1981, I think, and I remember riding my bicycle around town and the reception was not friendly. I mean, people honked at me and yelled at me and they seemed to act like I didn't belong on the streets, and that was a little disturbing since I've been riding on streets since I was 12 years old, but I'm happy to say that things have gotten a lot better and people are still honking and waving at me, but it's much friendlier and Moscow has gone very well to improve its bicycling profile.
Margaret, I think any of us that ride bikes, and I do, but not as diligently as you and others, but I do ride a bike, and every once in a while there are a few gestures. I'm for motorists and I've experienced that myself, and so it is kind of interesting, but much less than, like you said, at one time, so. Thank you, Margaret. One announcement for our agenda tonight, there will not be an executive session this evening, so for those of you I just thought I'd mention that. The next thing would be the approval of the Moscow City Minutes from the April 17th meeting. I would move approval of the minutes from April 17th.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Art in a second by Jim to approve the minutes. I'll start the roll with John.
Aye.
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 Okay, we'll move on to the next thing. Staff recognition report. Gary, do you have anything for us tonight?
For tonight, sir.
Okay, none. Mayor's appointments, there is none. On item number three, item number four, public comment and mayor's response period, we allow folks to get a chat with us and let us know what their concerns are as long as it's something that is not in front of planning and zoning, the Board of Adjustments, or tonight's agenda. And if you'd like to speak, we give you three minutes and please state your name and address. Let us know what your concerns are.
Hello, Troy Zacharison, 676 West Pullman Road, here in Moscow. Counsel, thank you for hearing me. Tonight I come to you with a heavy heart. I, like many people in EMS, got into this line of work to help people. Last night on my way to bed, the tones went off. I paused to listen as the volunteers for Moscow Fire were dispatched to a serious accident with multiple victims about a mile from PAC EMS's station. I want to praise the Moscow volunteers. They had a quick response and they provided lifesaving work in the dark hours of the night. They recognized that they did need some extra hands and immediately called for mutual aid with Pullman. As a father, a community member, and a paramedic, my heart was wrenched as I listened to the report over dispatch that the victims could be heard screaming in the vehicle. They were undoubtedly terrified and in great deal pain while waiting for help to arrive, for the hands that would, after a great deal of effort, free them. No one wants to imagine the ordeal that they were facing in those agonizing minutes. I got into EMS almost 20 years ago because I wanted to serve people in what is often a desperate time of need. During my years of service, I've seen many things, traumas, deaths, and even some miracles. I have knelt by people in horrific pain. Last night, there was a pit in my stomach. The PAC EMS station was only a mile away from this terrible tragedy. There were multiple victims severely injured, waiting for more resources coming from 10 miles away. There was nothing I could do. Dispatch tone for a second medic. I was miserable. I'm a critical care paramedic, minutes away from the scene, knowing that there are traumatized, suffering people nearby who would have to endure great pain until additional resources arrived from miles away. I was frustrated, knowing that I could have responded with an ALS ambulance in just minutes and assisted in providing care and easing the pain of the victims. But PAC EMS was not called upon to help. PAC EMS has ALS resources available in seconds, right here in Moscow, when situations like these occur. As a paramedic, someone whose mission has been to hold the hands of the hurting and care for them in a time of crisis, it is the most difficult thing in the world to sit by and do nothing. When lives are on the line, when seconds count, it doesn't matter who is there to help. It isn't a matter of whose turf it is. It's a matter of working together, saving the lives of the people in our community and the people we love and serve. Thank you for your time.
Okay, with that, we see nobody else coming up. I'll move on to the next thing, and it will be item number five, Citizens' Commission Report on Moscow Pathways, David Schott. And we have Jonathan as well. David, you got a report for us this evening?
Yes. Honorable Mayor, members of council, it's my pleasure, and please help me welcome Jonathan Grayden, our Chair of our Moscow Pathways Commission. He'll be presenting our annual report tonight.
All right.
With that, Jonathan?
Thank you, David. Counsel, staff, members of the community.
I gotta find the, we had it on, there we go.
All right. Had to do a PDF because of compatibility issues. So I am Chair of the Moscow Pathways Commission. Our mission statement is that we, as a commission, promote and advise on the development of a path system in and around Moscow embracing three community concerns: transportation, recreation, and resource conservation enhancement. This very well fits in with Bike Month and alternative transportation. And we have been established as a commission for, I believe, two years now. Prior to this, we were a task force going back almost 20 years, I think, something like that, a long time. And you see, we have our members and our staff. We have awesome staff liaison, David and Donna Howard's our staff secretary, Gina is our council liaison. So for recent accomplishments over the past year, we finally have a fully staff commission. All seven spots are filled, which we had not had since our former Chair passed away right as we became a commission. So this is a significant milestone for us, and we have Safe Routes to School Coordinator on our board. Margaret is also with the LeTah Trail, so we have a lot of interdepartmental communication with various agencies locally and regionally, and we have people who walk, who bike, who have gardening or other interests, so we have a lot of interest in that. Last year, we did a successful path tour. We do one each year showcasing different parts of the path section. This year, we went from the Chipman Trail start near Winco all the way to Alturis Park on the east side town, through the university, through Berman Creekside Park, and heard from community members along the way as well as people who joined us. We had a couple of city council members and a county commissioner on the ride. Record turnout, actually, for that. Also, we did farmer's market outreach. We did three times over the summer, hearings and feedback and things like that. One of the things that came out of that, as you can see in the lower-left photo, was pathway striping. We did, we had edge striping several years before, but we heard from people who, especially in Berman Creekside Park, walking their dogs or walking, would get, have people cut the corners on their bikes, and so we figured, let's put some striping down, general highway code striping for pathways, and the reception has been really, really good. I managed to get a shot of some people passing each other and working well with those stripes. We also started earthwork on the Blackbird Crossing/Blackbird Station. That final name will be decided at a future council meeting. That's near Alturis Park across the highway from East Side Marketplace. This will be a, have a station, waystation with bike racks, a fountain, benches, kind of like the one on Pullman on the Chipman Trail, so this will be great for people going out to Troy or coming back from Troy. We also, in the past year, got the grant for the Steiner Avenue Highway underpass. That grant was approved, and I wrote a letter of recommendation for that the year before, and construction should start around 2018. We will have some input on design and safety. At least one of our members is active in engineering, so that makes sense. Looking ahead, some of our goals and aspirations, we, following on the hopeful success of the Steiner Avenue, White Avenue underpass, we would like to look at the potential for an underpass at Highway 95, just south of Highway 8, because right now the path uses the Sweet Avenue crosswalk and it's pretty treacherous, especially you get big trucks or cars coming down that hill and you don't know if they're gonna stop. Doing a underpass here would provide crosstown connectivity very easily. We're in, just in the very initial evaluation stages as a class project with the U of I, which, as some of you who've been around for a long time remember, that's how the Steiner Avenue underpass started. We are also revamping the farmer's market display materials. This is the old, big display board, which one of our members put together very nicely, but it's bulky and it's hard to update. We are looking into some vinyl, retractable vinyl banners that will be cost-effective, easy to update, and hang they're weatherproof and everything. Looking around $70 to start and then refreshes of those will be 20 bucks or less. So yeah, we're, I'm finalizing the designs of those. We have some naming things that we're waiting on. Other than that, we are looking at a fall community party at Berman Creekside Park, and our member Becky Chastain is looking into that, kind of a little community get-together at Berman, talk about the pathways, get some community support, kind of just outreach, some live music, maybe some food and stuff like that. We're also looking at the path extension near Patty's Kitchen, going diagonal from Deacon to the parking lot apartments there. There is some land issues, some city, it's part city, part private, so we'd have to look into how to do that, but it's a de facto pathway for a lot of students already, so if we can make that official, that would further our goals of community transportation. And our other thing that we're always ongoing is looking at orphan paths and pedestrian rights of way that aren't marked. I just became acquainted with one near the city shop by Sojourners Alliance that we might be, consider marking as public right of way. It's already city access. So yeah, that's kind of where, we've got some short-term things of farmer's market materials we're looking at and things like that, and then long-term goals. If we get the 95 underpass, that won't be for another, probably 10 or 15 years, but it's on our scale looking ahead. So I think that's pretty much it. Any questions, comments?
Is this for Jonathan? Jim?
Jonathan, I just want to say I think you guys are doing a great job and you've made a lot of progress in the last couple of years from something that started out as just a task force and its livelihood or its continued livelihood was in question is now one of the most active commissions, so thank you very much for your service.
A point that I'll make to you, Jonathan, where that 95 is, where you're looking at going under that, underneath that road there, there's gonna be a huge development out there over these next few years, and so that might be something to tie right into, because there should be a lot of traffic from there across the street to the university.
That's partly why we're looking at that, is definitely because of that development and, you know, current safety considerations, and we're hoping to possibly, the students who are doing the feasibility study, they're also looking at maybe using the historic Main Street Bridge as some sort of pathway connection, because right now it's not being used, it's just sitting there, and it's a cool bridge, and I don't know if there's an easy way to connect to downtown, you know, with Idaho Transportation Department and Highway 8 there, but it would be cool if we could, and that would provide even further connectivity.
As time goes, there might be some grant opportunities for us to as well. Other questions for Jonathan? Well, thank you very much for the nice report, Jonathan.
Yeah, thank you much.
Okay, with that, we'll move on to item number six, Website Vendor Selection and Contract. Jen Epithner will present for us this evening. Good evening, Jen.
Good evening. Yes, I'm here to talk about the potential website contract for a project we've been working on for some time. We began, our current website redevelopment project about a year ago had explored some local in-town options to update our website, which was done back in 2012, so several technology changes have come along since 2012, so we're looking to update the site. We have a tremendous amount of information on our site. The way it translates to mobile devices and other types of things is one of the things we wanted to address, as well as a cleaner, more intuitive look and feel and interactive or interaction with our website. So those are some of the projects that we'll be taking on with the overhaul this summer. As I noted, there's, the contract itself breaks itself down into four annual payments of $9,850 each year. This is a change in the pricing that we saw originally in 2012, actually, when we went to put together the RFQ for this current project. We anticipated a higher upfront cost with much lower annual costs. We found with the Civic Plus, our vendor that we're recommending, that that was a different pricing plan that they have in place now. Councilmember Steed had asked, and I just recently got back to him, but wanted to share, that was how their pricing was originally proposed in the contract, or excuse me, in the RFQ response, and then in the contract, they also provided the amount that you've seen with the draft in your packet of you can do the pay in full one upfront cost. So we have prepared the contract for the four-year payment or installation payments. Other than that, the project should kick off as soon as the contract is approved, and we'll go through a process that'll involve a lot of staff involvement, some community involvement as well, so we make sure the new site really meets the needs of both in making sure that we keep that information out there and continue to be transparent and even more so and even better at it as we move forward.
Questions from Jen on the website service agreement? Jim, this was heard in front of-
Yeah, it was in Public Works Finance this last week, and I think we passed it on with the recommendation to approve, but just wanted the entire council to hear the presentation, so with that, I guess I would move to approve the website service agreement.
I'll second that.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim and a second by Gina to approve the website services for professional services of Civic Plus in an amount of not to exceed $10,000 for the initial development of a website design. Further questions? Walter?
Thank you, Mayor. Jen, the council staff report asks for an amount not to exceed $10,000, yet the agreement calls for four years of 9175 each. I guess I'm just a little confused about what we're buying and what, do we have to have this come back every year for the budgeting of the 9175 years, 2, 3, 4, or what?
In the contract, we added a non-appropriation clause so that in future years, if council is determined that they did not want to allocate this through the budget process, they'd have that opportunity to do so, so you would see it each year in the budget process as we brought it forward.
So are we approving the contract, period?
Yes.
Or approving $10,000 for the first year?
$10,000 for the first year with the contract to be forward in future years, coming, the funding coming through the budget process.
Okay, but it, if I may, but, I think the motion was to approve the contract.
Yeah, the motion is to approve the contract for professional services of Civic Plus in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for initial development of a website design. Initial, which is now.
Correct. And you're saying that works?
Yes.
Gary, you want to weigh in on this?
I think Jen said it succinctly, and that as contract's being approved, what we're agreeing to is that we will make that payment to get the project off the ground, and then it will come back to you each year in the budget process, and you'll have a chance to approve the funding at that time. Made sure it had, as Jen indicated, a non-appropriation clause so it doesn't violate the Idaho Constitution, and that's the contract.
Yeah, I don't have any problem with it. I just want to make sure that we're doing what we think we're doing.
Understand.
Okay, any other questions before we vote on the motion? Everybody understands the motion?
Yeah, and what Walter's talking about, the information's on page 36 of the packet, so in case somebody wanted to see it.
Thank you, Catherine. I'll start the roll with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay. We will move on to item number seven. Thank you, Jen, very much. Commitment of Hamilton funds to park development, playground development. Dwight Curtis, Dwight, you have the podium, sir.
Okay, thank you. Well, thank you for allowing me this opportunity to come up and ask you for a lot of money. What we're looking for is council commitment of the remaining Hamilton bequest of approximately $1.9 million, plus some personal, remaining personal property which would be sold, and it is just an estimate, but probably about $100,000. And this would be for future purchases of playground equipment and installation in the preliminary pathways to get to that equipment in our undeveloped park properties. And of the current balance, which is about $2.9 million, the city council's previously earmarked $1 million for the Pluse Ice Rink Project, and with that, we're looking at primarily the undeveloped properties at the moment. This could also include future replacement playgrounds with existing parks. But once you have, our determination is that, once you have turf and irrigation and you put in a playground and a pathway to get to it, now you have a functional park. And as you recall from back when we came to you with our conceptual designs for our parks, they're very expensive, and we're under no illusions that to have the money to build all those at once completely just isn't going to happen. So we plan to phase these as best that we can. So by following our plan, get the playgrounds on there and the grass, now we've got functional parks, and we'll follow up with the amenities, the other amenities, as time and budgets allow. This is in line with our existing Parks and Recreation Master Plan. As part of our attempt to save money and also to control quality and timing, we are going to attempt to do these in-house. We sent staff over to be certified as installers, and we feel very confident that we'll be able to do a good job and save the city some money and get these things going. This also falls within the quarter-mile walkability plan that we have within the Master Plan. The project's in line with the Hamilton requirements. It is for children. Aren't many things that you could argue about with the playgrounds and not being for children. Just rough estimate based on about $140,000-ish for a complete playground, that this would likely be around 13 playgrounds in the future. It also ensures the ability to get our parks initially developed, get people on them. And it also gives us some financial flexibility, since this money would, I mean, it's already in the city coffers. It gives us some flexibility, so when opportunities come up, such as sales or working with other entities such as possibly the school district to go havesies on a playground, things like that, that we have the money there that we can work with and not be so tight with the general fund and through the budget process that way. I would also like to make note that, should this be approved, that we would still follow the budget process as we do now. It's just where the money's coming from would be different. In your packets, I had a chart here, a graph showing the, just basically where the money would go and how it would go, or how it would be used, and these are just estimates, approximations. Things change, costs change, there are topography issues that could be easier or more difficult depending on the properties. For example, the Indian Hills Park that we're presently getting ready to work on, you know, it has, it's on a hill and it's a very short piece of property, so we have to be able to get up on top of that, and so have a little bit of- to get up on top of that, and so have a little bit of ADA issues that we have to work with. So, but anyway, you can see what our plan is here, and this also, this is just the properties that we presently have, but this plan includes those future properties that we will have, and as well as any possible replacements that we might have to do. Just refresher, here's the Indian Hills Park concept, and I have my fancy pointer here. The playground area is here. And this is conceptual, so as time goes, and we actually do our developments, they could change a little bit. This is the Milton Arthur Park, and the playground area is here, and the swing set here. At Tony Park, the playground area is here. As you drive, go down At Tony Drive, you can see the power line that goes through. Basically, the playground is under that area. And Lola Clyde Park, long time coming, playground area is right here. This, off to the left, that is a North Polk Extension and Rodeo Drive down here to the So, tonight, we're asking you to approve the resolution in your packet, committing the remaining Hamilton bequest for the future purchases of playground equipment and installation and the preliminary pathway access to those playgrounds for City Park Properties. This was reviewed by the Public Works Administrative Committee last Monday, April 24th, and it was recommended for approval. Open for any questions.
Okay, Jim, this was heard on Public Works and Finance on April 24th?
Yes, it was, and most of the discussions entered on the wise use of those funds, since we're not getting any financial return on them at all, basically, now, and that the cost savings on this, buying this equipment now, as opposed to putting it off in the future, would probably amount to a greater financial gain than leaving those funds in the pool where they are now. So, that was the basis for our recommendation to approve.
Yeah, another point that was made was that having the funds available also enables the city to participate in buy-one-get-two approaches to some of the equipment as well. Having the funds available to jump onto a yard sale, as it were, is, would be able to happen. So, that would be a good thing, too. And as Jim pointed out, sitting on a pile of money is not doing the kids of Moscow any good, and that's what this Hamilton bequest is for, and this would be excellent use for those monies to get the parks up and running and get the people of Moscow closer to parks. We've got a lot of parks, they just are sitting there doing nothing, and this is a great way to leverage that.
Catherine?
Yeah, I just appreciated the presentation at Parks and Rec, in the phasing, and that, to me, was the biggest part of understanding the development and with the turf irrigation and pathways tip. And that whole idea that it's a process, and as soon as you get people out there, then you get more involvement in the phases, and then that's how the parks really grow and stay dynamic. And I think that the Parks Commission is really avidly dedicated to making sure that these get done, so I'm excited about this.
Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Dwight, in a list that you've got in the packet about the phasing, if I understand correctly, what we're doing is, and I'm a real supporter of this, because I've seen all this parkland we've had for years and hadn't been able to do anything with, but you're going to do playgrounds, effectively, some trails for access, some minimal work in the entire list, and you're going to pay attention as you do it, so that when you get down to the last one, you've still got money left to do something there, too, and not have spent it all before you get to the last one in the list, I presume, is the plan. I mean, you could drop on Indian Hills Park, I don't know what the total budget was for the concept, but quarter million dollars, something like that, and that's not your intent. Your intent is to do minimal work and work your way through all of them?
Correct. Correct. And, yeah, and the way that the, I mean, we have the designs, they are conceptual, we have some flexibility to make some changes, because as you saw in those plans, some of those are pretty grandiose, and you don't necessarily need some of those playgrounds to be the sizes that they have. We can condense those. It's the surfacing that is the big cost on those, so by consolidating, you know, you save a whole lot of money. And doing it in-house, we're trying to save money so that we can get the most bang for the buck, and the reason that we were asking for the remaining amount of the Hamilton funds was so that we can go beyond this list. And, of course, this money, we're not looking at the amenities, we're just looking at this particular part of it. And so, through the regular budget process, donations, grants, what have you, and other in-house things that we can do, we would try to finish up the other parts of the parks.
Catherine?
Well, you told a great story about the, I don't remember the man's name that's in-house that went to get the certification to do the playground-
Calvin.
Calvin Macy.
Calvin, yeah. And because he took it upon himself, and then he went off to do that. And so, what I, you talked about the costs of the company that had come in originally, and the oversight to make sure that it was done well, and they were far away, and you couldn't do it, and so, because it's going to be done in-house, quality control is in place.
Very important. I mean, granted, I mean, we did shift from the wood chips as surfacing to the tiles, a lot of different reasons for that. It's a higher cost upfront, but over the long run, you save a fortune. But, at this particular time, there are only two vendors in this whole region, and I'm not talking Idaho, I'm talking several states, that is qualified or even interested in doing those kind of installations. And we had a very bad experience, the last one that we had, that we had done, and it still isn't quite right. So, we're going to remedy that and do it ourselves, and save the city some money.
Walter had brought up a good point earlier. Geez, we acquire these parklands, and then, like the Lola Clyde, we've had it for years, and done nothing with it, so it's good to see some grass down, some pathway through it, and a playground. That's what we're talking about, basically. I'll go to Gina, come back to you, Walter. Gina?
Sorry, Walter, you were first.
No, go ahead.
Dwight, explain to me one more time, please, and you had to at Public Works, so just be patient with me, please, about the design. It's still kind of an iterative process, is that what I understand? Help me understand that, please.
The designs of the parks?
Right.
Well, they're conceptual designs, they're not construction plans, so it gives you a good idea of what it is that you want, and this did go through the public process, so it wasn't staff coming up with this, it was the neighbors and then the rest of the community that wanted to be involved. So, there are just some things that you can change, and it's not in stone. There's some things that likely might not be feasible down the road, too. I mean, some really high-cost items. We had these discussions with the different groups that, you know, I mean, I mean, you're really asking for some very expensive items, and so they might take a while longer to get. But in the meantime, it still would be a functional park, and, you know, I think it's a very workable plan.
Walter, I'll go back to you.
Dwight, in your list up there, your MSD community playfields.
Yes.
You told me that that is a playground in a existing space, currently grassed, currently irrigated, currently drained. Why isn't it up at the top of the list? Why not throw that playground in there and have one done?
Well-
Because the others require a lot more than that.
Yes. Well, primarily, it's because it was sort of an afterthought for the slide. It does require participation, well, I shouldn't say be, I don't know that the city has said that we would pay 100% for a playground. So, my assumption is that possibly, likely, we would go to the school district and say, "Are you going to pay for half of this?" That has not been decided that they would. So, to me, at this point, it's still an unknown. This, I mean, we could, Baker Street Park, for example, the only reason that's not in the upper part is because they decided they might replat that, change the design, and so we might have a different space on the earth of where that playground would be than what the, you know, the present plat is. So, you know, you just, you just don't, some of these-
I understand your two sets of list. I mean, I get it. It's just that the community playfield struck me as one that-
I just don't have any answers from the school district, we haven't gotten that far.
Well, we have with the school district, too, you've got something like Lena Whitmore, for example. That's a park part as well as a school, and so there's discussions going on.
Yeah. Lena Whitmore's a little different animal, because, I mean, we have a playground there, they have a playground there. Their playground was donated by the parent-teacher, the PTA folks, I think. It's falling apart, but it doesn't make sense to have two playgrounds there, to me. To me, I never did understand why that is the way it is. But, the one that we have probably isn't big enough to handle an elementary school. So, we did discuss it just briefly a few years back, and there was some interest that when we did anything there, that we talked to the school district, and possibly they would go and house for anything new that would go in there. Moscow, or the school district playfields is just purely because I don't have any definitive answers from them yet.
Okay.
I mean, it only takes a quick flick on the switch, and that goes to the other list. So, and it also, there's also the human resource part of this. Our guys have not done this before, and we already have a plan based on the parks that we already have the conceptual designs for. We would not be able to handle, just physically, putting in a whole lot of playgrounds all at once. We just, we don't have the physical resources to do that. So, this year, we'll do Indian Hills, they've been waiting 30-some years for a park itself, you know. So, we'll get that handled, they'll understand what they can and can't do. We have two planned, and this is just our own schedule, but two planned for next year and the other two planned for the next year. If it turns out they can handle it, and we can move it up, and the school district is open to it, or whatever you, I mean, it's not my decision, it's your decision, of how that gets paid for, then we'll move, we'll move the list accordingly.
It's smart to plug away, and a few at a time, because it's like eating an elephant, you're not going to be able to do it all at once, and plugging away year after year, at least we're getting some, we're moving forward with it. Dwight, somebody else had a comment over here?
I just wanted, so with the Parks and Rec Commission, I asked Dwight, because, you know, the request for the Hamilton funds, I just wanted to make sure that Parks Department is still going to be funded, and this doesn't take away from their normal budgeting. And then Dwight answered, "It'll be good," right?
Yeah.
Yeah. I didn't want people to think that this is going to be in lieu of-
Well, Catherine, when we do the budget summary, that's another good question for you to bring up, dear. That's another discussion point.
Yeah.
Your honor, if I may?
Gary?
This, if the council chooses to approve this proposal and approve the resolution, it will be replacing Resolution 2003-06, which, as you know, a resolution is a statement of council policy, as opposed to an ordinance, which is city law, if you will. So, the council can change its policy as it wishes, so essentially, that Resolution 2003-06 reflected that the Hamilton funds essentially would be used to finance the certificates of participation, which originally had constructed the Hamilton Indoor Recreation Facility, and two, that revenues off the Hamilton funds would, meaning interest, would be utilized for helping to offset the cost of the HERC, the cost of operations, in recent years, by way of history, because this will have budgetary impacts other than just earmarking the funds. The Hamilton Indoor Recreation Center seal, certificates of participation were paid off several years ago, when we started paying greater interest on those certificates than we were receiving in interest, so revenue. So, the council made the decision at that time, based on recommendations, to pay those off. That depleted that Hamilton fund down significantly. Then, council approved the $1.8 million for participation in the Moscow School District Community Playfield. So, the history of these funds has always been in conformance with Bob Hamilton's will that they be used for the benefit of young children. This proposal does that as well. One thing I wanted to make sure of is Dwight has put staff's proposal and prioritization of those parks before you. Each of those, as they proceed, and the council's free to change those priorities, as it will, will be brought to you in the budgetary process. So, you're not authorizing spending of these monies, that will be on a case-by-case basis. What you're merely saying is that it is the intent of the council that the use of these funds will be utilized for those playground constructions and pathways, so that playgrounds can be utilized. So, the individual projects will be brought through on an individual basis. So, approval of this resolution tonight, if council chooses to do so, is not a approval of the prioritization program or any of that, although staff will be bringing that, I'm sure, forward in that order. Council is free to make any decisions they want in the budgetary process.
Walter?
Gary, if I may, in that regard, until such time as the Hamilton funds we're talking about are totally drawn down, where does the interest money go? Continue to go to the maintenance fund for the HERC?
It goes, if I recall right, general fund pays for the maintenance and operations of the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center. That's usually somewhere around $1.7 to $1.8 million of transfer of general funds. I can't tell you, Walter, if the revenues go directly back to the Parks and Rec Fund for that purpose, or whether they go to interest in the general fund and then to Parks and Rec. But, revenues for operations far exceed the amount of interest earned on the Hamilton funds.
If I may, Mr. Mayor, let's try it this way. Will the interest earned on the unutilized Hamilton funds for the projects that we're talking about continue as they currently are, or will they be used to increase the amount available to build these parks we're talking about?
It will not be maintained within the Hamilton Fund unless the council, in the budget process directs that it does so.
Because what we're doing here is we're drawing it out of the Hamilton Fund, we're putting it Park and Rec Fund with an earmark for what it's for, right? That's what we're doing.
I believe the accounting process is that the amount of funds that are transferred from the general fund to Parks and Rec for maintenance of the Hamilton facility exceeds the amount of revenues that come from the Hamilton Fund. So, it really makes no difference whether they're directly allocated to Parks and Rec, or whether they go to the general fund and then are allocated out.
Well, to take them out of the Hamilton Fund, the Hamilton Fund disappears.
No, there's, these are revenues, interest-
I'm not talking about the revenues, I'm talking about the funds.
Oh.
The funds are drawn out, and it's going to be in a separate, the $1.9 million you're talking about is going to be earmarked in Parks and Rec for these parks as we go along in time, and it's coming out of the Hamilton Fund. And then the $1 million that is earmarked for the Ice Rink will be that only portion staying in there until that either gets depleted via what the council has approved for the Ice Rink, and then eventually it'll completely go away, right?
Mechanically, what will happen is the Hamilton funds are maintained in a fiduciary fund. They're only distributed in accordance with the Hamilton will, the corpus of the funds. Those funds, even this $1.9 million, will be maintained in that budget or that fund. As Parks and Rec makes a proposal to construct a park, then transfer, if it's approved by council, transfer of that amount of money will go from the Hamilton Fund to Parks and Recreation Capital on-
Per park.
Per park.
Per park. So, it's standing in the Hamilton Fund, and as a park, Indian Hills gets approved or whatever, Dwight brings it to council, they said, yep, they give the nod, it's $130,000, let's just say. Now, $130,000 comes out of the Hamilton Fund- Now, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars comes out of the Hamilton Fund, bingo, and it's earmarked for Indian Hills.
It'll go to Capital Projects Parks for construction of the park.
But the question had to do with the interest.
Well, I thought, I was interested in how the rest of it worked.
No, you, you've clarified, you've clarified the principle, right? I know Jim made the comment, "The interest is hardly anything," but I doubt it's that little. It's probably a little more than that.
I don't know, Jim, you-
He could tell you the exact amount, but currently it's a, but the point you make is a good point, that if interest rates went up and, and we've only spent a hundred and forty thousand out of that fund, and then the interest becomes a reasonable amount of money, a, a noticeable amount of money, does it, does it get, go to the general fund to pay for the HERC like it currently does, or does it go back into the Hamilton Fund to augment the, the financing-
To increase the, the playground funding.
Dwight has something to say about that.
You just wanna get your fingers in it, Dwight, or you-
I was exercising my fingers.
Well, my thought is, I mean, I asked for the remaining funds, so anything other than that million dollars is what I'm asking for. Um, I hadn't really thought about the interest. I'm glad it was brought up, but I guess the question is, who gets the interest, right? That's the question.
Yeah, that's the question, yeah.
So, that's remaining money, in my interpretation.
That would not be my interpretation.
I tried.
And I'm not sure, Mayor, that I care. I just wanted an answer.
Well, maybe a question for Gary would, would be, currently, any interest that comes from the Hamilton Fund goes in the general fund to pay for the maintenance and operation of the HERC, correct?
Yes.
So, that would continue on as long as there were, was still a corpus in the trust that collected interest, right? Even though that doesn't obviously pay for the maintenance, it would assist that.
You have to remember, when the council in 2003 passed this resolution, it was their intent specifically that they wanted to use, they wanted to maintain the Hamilton corpus so that the time the certificates of participation were paid off for the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center, they would still have the full amount of money, and they would have only used the interest off of those funds to pay the certificates off, okay? Their intent, the council's intent at the time, was at the end of twenty years, when the certificates were paid off, they would have the full amount of money left. Only the revenues were authorized as committed for, uh, the certificates of participation. In addition, at the time, because interest rates were fairly significant and we had something in, around seven million dollars in the bank, that it generated sufficient revenues to offset the annual cost of the certificates of participation, as well as generated enough interest to offset the costs of the, of the operations of the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center. Council had two prongs. They wanted to make sure that the HERC was built through certificates of participation and that the maintenance of that facility and operations were paid for with interest off the Hamilton funds. Specifically, they did not want the operation of the HERC to be placed back on, uh, the taxpayers, if you will. Council, when they decided to pay the certificates of participation off, lowered the corpus enough, as well as the interest rates that we experienced at the time, that it was insufficient to offset the cost of the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center. Therefore, the council authorized use, use of, um, foregone taxes in order to make up that difference. So, uh, council essentially, uh, is taking general fund monies and paying for, uh, the operations of the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center, just like they do for most operations in, in the Parks and Rec, uh, budget. So, there's no real change.
Well- Go ahead, Walter.
But, but yes, there is. Um, I think the resolution that we're being asked to approve, to approve tonight, and I don't have any problem with it, should include a comment on what to do with the interest money, because Dwight's not gonna pull this money down tomorrow. He's, he's gonna pull it as he needs it, as approved by council in the budgetary process. Um, whether or not, as Dwight has almost asked, it is used to increase the amount available to him to do playground construction, or whether it stays and is used as it currently is to go into the general fund to pay for the maintenance of the HERC, I don't know that I care that much. I just think it should be addressed.
Yeah, I don't know if it's in there, is that, is there wording in the resolution that addresses that?
No.
No.
No, there isn't.
If I may?
Yeah, Gary.
The will is silent. It doesn't say that interest on the fund goes, uh, is restricted as the, um, corpus is. Again, I would comment that, uh, the interest has been utilized as council-directed for the certificates of participation and the operations. For council to now say that they're restricted, you're saying that funds that had been utilized, albeit they aren't very much, to offset the cost of the Hamilton Indoor Rec operation will now go away, and that will be an additional burden to the general fund. So, that goes beyond the scope of this question.
Then, if I may, Mayor, then why don't we include in the resolution that the interest on any undrawn funds by the Parks and Rec Department, for the purposes we're talking about tonight, would go in, back into the general fund to support the maintenance of the HERC? I wouldn't have a problem with that. I mean, you're doing away with Resolution 2003-06. It's going, it's disappearing.
If you disappear that, then you disappear the, the, the idea that that's how the interest was being spent, right? So, maybe we should reiterate that in this resolution, that that continues on as it is in the previous revolution.
Certainly can do that. Because of the structure and the way we budget, again, the costs of operation of the Hamilton Indoor Rec Center far exceed any interest earnings on this fund.
We understand. We understand.
But you'd still like to see that interest-
It's council's direction. We can certainly make that happen, although I, I guess I don't see the practicality of it.
Well-
Gotta go somewhere.
Something has to change in the account of, like, currently, that interest comes, gets paid into the, into the, the trust corpus somehow, and then it gets sent to the general fund some other way. There's, there's gotta be an accounting entry that does that, correct?
Okay. If you would like a full report on it, and I will go back and I will check the budgets and I can bring you a full accounting of how that has been done in the past. I was ill-prepared to do that tonight.
Why don't you, maybe this, maybe what we should do, being this question is brought up by, um, Councilors Jim and Walter Steed, bring this back to Public Works and Finance next Monday, with that to address and bring it back on the next council meeting.
Certainly can do.
Without further action. What do you guys think of that?
While, while telling Mr. Curtis that his, his proposal is not really in jeopardy.
Here, Dwight, just keep the smile on your face. You've got a couple of more weeks to wait for it. Again, come to the Public Works and Finance next Monday. Does that sound good, everybody? Okay, we are gonna take a five-minute recess, everybody, before we move on to item number Okay, we are resuming our meeting, and we are gonna go to item number eight, which is April 18th, 2016, minutes correction. Rod, you're gonna present this in front of us here. We made a goof from a motor business to a neighborhood business or vice versa.
You pretty much described it. Thank you, your honor, city councilors. I'll wait for Mr. Steed. Here tonight, just on a little bit of housekeeping, we're gonna, tonight, we're requesting direction from council, um, to correct the minutes from, actually, it was April 18th, 2016, city council meeting. Uh, there was an agenda item, number eight, that night, that relating to the Harvest Hills, um, rezone, and on page five of seven of those, um, minutes, there was a reference to a motor business when it should have actually stated a neighborhood business. And so, tonight, we're just asking that this council direct the clerk to take the necessary step to correct the prior city council minutes to actually reflect the accuracy what the council intended at that time.
Mr. Mayor, I would so move. Okay, so Walter's made a motion to move.
I'd second it.
And, uh, Art has made a second, so the city clerk will change it, put the word in, word for motor business with, or as I'm, replacing motor business with neighborhood business. Got it? We'll start with you, Gina.
Aye.
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 Okay, so our city clerk got that, so we're good to go, Lori.
And, your honor, just wanted to say, the reason why we brought it here, 'cause the city clerk is in charge of the, the minutes, but she just can't go back and change them. We would not want her-
That is against the rules of the law.
Yes.
I'm not an attorney, but I do understand that, so thank you very much, Rod. Okay, we will move on to item number nine, which is Harvest Hills Final Plat. Michael Ray, hi, Mike, how are you tonight?
Doing well, Mayor. How about you? Good evening, your honor, council members. So, before you tonight, we have, uh, the final plat for Harvest Hills addition to the City of Moscow. So, as you recall, Harvest Hills addition was about a seven-and-a-half acre, uh, property on the east side of Mountain View and the current terminus of Third Street. Uh, highlight, outlined in red at the center of your screen, uh, surrounded by various residential development. You have the Rolling Hills additions, uh, to the south. Uh, you got vacant land, uh, which was previously part of a, a prior subdivision that was never recorded, uh, to the east, and then you have, uh, single-family residential subdivision to the north, Damon Addition, as well as Mozier Estates Addition. So, just going through some background, uh, where we've been up to this point, so July 22nd of 2015, Planning and Zoning Commission, uh, conducted a public hearing. They considered the request of Phil Rangens, uh, for a comp plan amendment, as well as a rezone of that subject property, and also included with that was a preliminary subdivision plat for the Harvest Hills addition. Uh, the commission ended up recommending denial of that request. And then in January 11th, 2016, the applicant ended up requesting that the proposal advance onto city council, so anytime you have a denial recommendation coming from the commission, uh, they need to request that the item be advanced onto the council, and so, uh, the applicant ended up doing that, and then, uh, went before council on February 1st of 2016. Council ended up approving the comp plan designation, as well as the rezone of the property, but, uh, ended up tabling the Harvest Hills preliminary plat, uh, mainly because of the discussion of the urban collector classification of Third Street and how that would provide no on-street parking, uh, and the applicant was proposing that no on-street parking be provided as part of that. So, just to recall the comp plan designation, so it was previously designated as neighborhood conservation. Uh, council approved the, the change in, in classification to suburban commercial, which is pink in your screen there. It's about 2.2 acres, uh, and then the, uh, residential designation is auto-urban residential, and that would be the, uh, yellow you see on your screen there. So, the rezone that followed that was to correspond to the land use designation. We had the 2.2 acres, that got rezoned to neighborhood business, and then the other residential portion of the subdivision ended up getting rezoned to medium-density residential, which is our three, uh, our three designation in the zoning code. So, after it was tabled, it ended up, uh, council ended up picking up it off the table on April 18th, 2016, and they ended up approving the preliminary plat with three conditions. Uh, the first one is that third, the applicant needs to widen Third Street from 70 feet to 80 feet, and that was in regards to the, uh, turn left, a left-hand turn lane, uh, as it approaches the intersection of Mountain View Road. And then the applicant needs to enter, enter a new memorandum of understanding and development agreement, which allows the deferral of the construction of Jansen Street. Uh, it also includes all underground utilities to future plat additions to the east. And then the final condition was the applicant provide nine on-street parking spaces on Third Street. So, this was the final plat submitted by the applicant. As you can see, uh, extension of Third Street, uh, from Mountain View here, ends up heading that northeastern direction. Uh, all these lots are twin homes, so you have 22 twin home lots, and then this would be the 2.2 acre neighborhood business parcel at the northwest corner of that subdivision. You can see, this was the widening of, uh, Third Street from 70 to 80 feet, uh, as it approaches that intersection, so they satisfied that condition. Uh, and then I've included a construction drawing as part of your packet to show the nine on-street parking spaces that the applicant ended up, uh, I guess, bulging in, uh, to the right-of-way in order to accommodate those on Third Street. And so, uh, those are located adjacent to the neighborhood business parcel, and they would provide, uh, access via a drive, uh, here in the middle of the neighborhood business parcel, but there'd be no access, obviously, with those, uh, on-street parking, uh, spaces in the, the eastern portion of that property. So, staffs reviewed the final plat for compliance with city and state code requirements and found it to be in- found it to be in conformance. The commission did review this on April 12th, and they recommended approval to the council. And with that, staff recommends approval of the Harvest Hills additional final plat with no conditions. And I'd certainly be able to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Mike Art.
Yeah, could you go back up one slide? Is, yeah, I need new batteries. Off to the east end there, the two darker colored things, that had just a hammerhead for turning? Or what?
Yeah, that would meet the hammerhead detail for a temporary firetruck turnaround, is what they're showing there.
That's set up, Mike, so that, I mean, eventually, you're going to have phase two of this thing, and we'll continue through, so this is just a temporary thing for this first phase.
Correct, yeah. The previous Windfall Hills subdivision, the never, the final plat never got recorded, so that would be null and void. You ended up including the entire area further to the east, but Mr. Rangans just wanted to plat this initial 7.45 acres, and then at future plats, he would plat it further to the east.
Walter? Speaking of that, Mike, the east, the property east of this, has it been preliminary planted now? Does that exist?
It does not, no.
So, what we've, what we have in the blank area to the east, or to the right of the drawing you've got there, is unplanted land?
Correct. Yeah, they went through a number of iterations with plats, but they went through the-
I'll admit, I forgot, we've had so many iterations of this thing, I've lost total track.
Well, we had Windfall Hills, that went entirely through the process, and the applicant never ended up recording the final plat, and so it ended up being null and void. I believe there was a previous iteration of Harvest Hills that platted the entire property. They just went through preliminary plat stage and never advanced on to final plat stage, mainly because of just crunching the numbers and not being able to make it pencil out. And so, the applicant has, you know, with this more recent iteration, ended up going through the comp plan change and the rezoning in order to do a little bit different of a development there with twin homes and the neighborhood cost, neighborhood business parcel. And he would just be plating this 7.45 acres. But, yeah, the property to the east currently does not have plat on it.
But does the property to the east have zoning designation yet? I can't remember if that went through or not.
It would remain what the current designation is, so it's still R2. So the rezone only affected the 7.45 acres, and not that property to the east.
All right.
Mine, I just remember conversation, we had a big conversation about the parking in the neighborhood business, with the, with people being able to have friends park in that. Do you remember all that conversation about that? We don't know what's going to go in there yet, but people would be able to park in the, if the businesses allow it, because they're not open in the evening. Do you remember that conversation we had all about that?
Yeah, it'd be hard to dictate that or control that. It would just be up to the property owner in the future, whether or not they open that up to public parking for the residents of that area. And so, I think that's why the council ended up imposing the condition of nine on-street parking spaces be placed on that north side, was to accommodate the parking in the neighborhood without, you know, you can't really force a requirement on to a future property owner as far as whether or not they can open their property up to, they may not have a large parking lot there, depending upon the use. So, it'd be hard to tell.
Thank you.
I think it's pretty- I would approve, move to approve the Harvest Hills addition final plat.
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion by Jim and a second by Catherine to approve the Harvest Hills additional final plat. I'll start the roll with Gina.
Aye.
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 Thank you, Mike. Now we'll move on to number 10, Harvest Hills subdivision memorandum of understanding. That will be Les McDonald.
Good evening, Mayor, members of the council. There will actually be three items in a row here, but this is the first of them that pertain to the final plat of the Harvest Hills first addition, which you just addressed. And the first of these is a memorandum of understanding. Now, this particular piece of property, it was, as was discussed in the last item, has a lot of history attached to it. And part of that had to do with the manner in which the original Windfall Hills subdivision was being developed, and some of the public improvements that were related to that project. So this is just a quick overview from the original Windfall Hills addition subdivision, and it was a project that was broken into three phases, in the yellow here being phase one, kind of green in the middle, and then the blue off to the right being the third. The project involved actually two different memoranda of understanding, first in 2008, second in 2009. And those were developed to address some specific areas that are shown here in circles. The first on the left side of the screen being the frontage improvements on Mountain View Road that needed to be done in front of the project, but at the same time, the city was looking at, you know, can we do something on the other half of Mountain View to do a full road improvement? We had a pathway system that we wanted to go through there. There was some right-of-way dedication, easement dedication, lots of things happening at the time. The other had to do with the extension of Jansen Street, which currently is unimproved north of the parcel here that was Windfall Hills. And there was a desire at the time to get a connection made up to Damon Street with an extension of Jansen as part of the overall project, to as much as anything, provide two points of access to what's a reasonably sized subdivision. So as part of that, those previous agreements, the city agreed to make improvements along Mountain View Road in the area of the plat, in exchange for some other consideration that was being made, including some dedications, some participation financially, and then the Jansen Street work. So, this exhibit shows the current Windfall Hills, excuse me, Harvest Hills first edition, and the frontage that now exists and has been constructed along that area. So, that, for the most part, has been addressed. We do have one remaining right-of-way item there that will be included. The second piece being, as I mentioned, the connection of Jansen Street here to the north, tying into the Damon and Jansen intersection. And again, here, we're showing the new first addition for Harvest Hills. All of this property, as was just discussed, is unplatted Rangin properties, so within the memorandum of understanding that's before you, that is the way it's referenced. We have the first addition, and then the remaining unplatted Rangin's property. The remaining item, actually, let me back up, one more thing here. In the Windfall Hills development, the way the phasing was set up, I showed you the phasing at the beginning, was specified within the development agreements that this improvement would be made with the second phase of the project. So really, that's that area that included the connection to the extension of Third Street, and all of that coming back to the west. So once that phase went into construction, we wanted this connection made. So in the memorandum that's before you today, we have, I guess, continued to reflect a phasing approach. The first addition is a single-phase project. It does not have anything beyond what's shown right here. So the way the current MOU is worded, it says that prior to any building permits being issued on the remaining property, any building permits being issued on the remaining property, that this improvement must be made. And the idea behind that is that, in essence, that becomes the second phase of development on the property. So that's consistent with the way the '08 and '09 MOUs were developed. And then the last piece that's within the current MOU is the dedication of this portion of right-of-way, which had not yet been done. The property to the south was previously dedicated, and we have a whole mess of easements that have been dedicated over time, related to utilities and pathways and road construction, all those types of things. But what we don't have as an outstanding item yet on this end, is that remaining bit of right-of-way. So the MOU that's before you essentially gives some of that history and all the preambles and all the wherances as to, you know, what's gone before, the mutual benefit that has been received by the property owner and the city in jointly advancing these various efforts. And then, within the body of the MOU itself, the requirements upon the developer to complete those two things, the dedication of this right-of-way, and then the ultimate construction of those Jansen Street improvements, with, in essence, a second phase of development on the land. So with that, I'll try to answer any questions that you might have.
Questions for Les. Walter?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Les, I don't see Jansen Street in the proposed document.
Well-
Is it supposed to be in there?
It shows up in a couple of places.
Okay. It doesn't pop up under a search of the spelling.
It was back there a decade ago when we originally did it.
Talking about, is it supposed to be in the, in the document we're to approve tonight?
Yes, on page two of seven, in the whereas, the preambles. The one, two, third one from the end of the wherances talks about developer wishes to hereby-
Just a minute, just a minute, let me catch up. Page what of what?
Page two of seven of the agreement.
Okay, I have a, I have a development agreement.
You, you should be looking at the memorandum of understanding, not the development agreement.
Okay.
We're on the MOU at this point. Development agreement is next.
Okay, that's the one that wasn't in the packet.
Right, the MOU, right.
Okay. That's why I can't find it, it's not here.
That would do it.
I'll see it down.
Show it up later.
Okay. Mel?
Well, I would move approval of the development agreement with Phil Rangans.
I'll second that.
Wait a minute. Memorandum of understanding-
MOU, yes.
Memorandum of understanding.
I'll second that.
Okay, we got a motion by Art and a second by Jim to approve the 2017 memorandum of understanding with Phil Rangans on the Harvest Hills first edition subdivision. Start with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, now we'll move on to the development agreement, Les.
Okay. Just briefly, this is a typical development agreement that we do on most of these types of subdivision projects. Generally speaking, the way the state statutes are set up, public improvements are to be constructed after preliminary plat is completed. Most of the time, developers wish not to do that. They would like to go ahead and go to final plat so that they can start selling lots to bring in some revenue to help pay for the improvements. So to help facilitate that, the city has historically done development agreements that say that, yes, you can do that, you have to place security for improvements that are not constructed before we'll issue any building permits, those types of things. So this agreement is consistent with how we've done these previously. So generally speaking, the contents that are within the documents like this, and including this one, specifies that public improvements need to be made, that they have to have engineering done by a licensed professional engineer within the state of Idaho, specifies the schedule, in this case, nine months, to complete all public improvements construction after the first building permit is issued. That allows winter construction of homes, but then completion of the public improvements by the end of the following summer. We specify the one-year warranty period, Parkland dedication, in this particular case, most of the dedication is occurring up along the frontage, along Mountain View where the trail is, and those types of things. And then the payment of street tree fees under a street tree program and any phasing. One thing that came up in the Public Works Finance Committee last week, a question was raised about whether or not this falls, this plat falls under the new street tree resolution, and the answer that was given was yes, that is actually incorrect. The applicant made that submittal prior to that resolution going into effect earlier this year. So what we had in that draft last week misstated that, so it has been corrected within this development agreement now to indicate the prior resolution that was in effect at the time the application was made. So it's not under the new program, it's still under the old program as a, prior to the current resolution being adopted. And then finally, phasing, in this case, as I mentioned earlier, there's only one phase proposed for this addition. So, any questions that you might have?
Questions for Les.
No, sir. I would move that we approve the development agreement with Phil Rangans for Harvest Hill Hills first addition subdivision.
Second that. Okay, we got a motion by Gina and a second by Art to approve the development agreement with the Rangans for Harvest Hills first addition subdivision. We'll start with Walter.
Aye.
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 Okay, now we will move on to item number 12, which is the Harvest Hills subdivision monumentation agreement.
Very good. The, this is the last of them, and as is required, again, under state statutes, the developer is mandated to install all of the property corners and the monuments that go in a subdivision to show the ownership boundaries for a piece of property out there in the field. That's what's specified in the Idaho codes, 501303, but there are also provisions in 1331 through 1333 that allow deferral of the installation of the interior monuments to a later date. And the reason for that is, there's a recognition that, okay, you plat the property, you go out and you put all those monuments out there, and then you come along and you start building utilities and roads and homes, and guess what? Everything inside is gone. So they set it up such that it can set the exterior monuments, place security with an agreement, monumentation agreement with the city, and then defer the installation of the interior monuments till all that disturbance work is done. And once that's complete, then they come back in and place those interior monuments. So this is, again, a standard document that we've been using for years, requires the work be done by a professional land surveyor licensed in the state of Idaho, places security based upon the estimated value of the work that has to be done to place those monuments, and then specifies the term under which those monuments must be installed. So that's short and sweet.
Okay, questions for Les on that? That's pretty self-driven.
I move we approve the monumentation agreement for Harvest Hills first addition subdivision.
Second.
Okay, we got a motion by Catherine and a second by Gina to approve the monumentation agreement for Harvest Hills first additional subdivision, first addition subdivision. I'll start with Gina.
Aye.
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 Okay, well, you can get things started out there. It's been a decade in the process, or longer to get going. Thank you, Les. With that, that ends our regular meeting, so we will go now into reports, and I'm going to start with Catherine.
I, well, I wish we'd passed the resolution for Parks and Rec, but at a later date. So you heard everything from Dwight, good meeting, Matt, and I just want to say that there's one vacancy on Parks and Rec, and we did have some people come, so if you're interested, parties, please apply online. Jim just agreed, and he and I are going to read the proclamation at the Ren Fair. Yay. And fill the racks is Wednesday, so everybody bike to where you're going to go. And then I went to, the day that everybody was marching, that evening, there was a presentation done on oil and gas development and resistance in Idaho communities, and Shelley and Jason Brock presented a completely superbly organized PowerPoint presentation that they've been doing around to educate people about what's happening in Idaho, and they gave a presentation to the Eagle City Council trying to get an ordinance that had to do with protecting the mineral rights and to do with fracking down there. So we'll have to talk about that more, but there's information, so if you'd like to know more information about that, you can go to Citizens Allied for Integrity and Accountability.
Okay, Gina.
Okay, as I reported last council meeting, Palouse Space and Aquifer Committee is indeed working on a marketing plan for the alternative water supply report that they have coming out. Pretty big deal, and so we're being very, very careful and deliberate about that. Pathways Commission, they were getting ready for their presentation this evening, and they are continuing with some of the things that were mentioned, like the kind of revamping the farmer's market presentation boards and things like that. So it's, it's kind of housework before you get out in the outside world. The Sustainable Environment Commission had a regular two-and-a-half-hour meeting the other night, but that occurred because the Pullman Stormwater Services gentleman, Rob Bukert, came over and gave us a presentation about his, what Pullman does with their stormwater, and how their system is set up. And so it's, it is becoming a very relevant, important topic to hear how other cities are doing it and how we can, we can do it. Kyle Steele, our city staff, then also updated on kind of what Moscow is doing and that sort of thing. It was some information and the- It was some information, and, and the, the plan will be coming up for public comment probably summer, fall of this year. And then we had kind of a cool update on the sustainability, the recycling is revamped, and the rebate program for the, for the toilet upgrades are, is wildly successful. One apartment complex in the last month replaced 34 toilets. One, one entity did that. So it's really catching on, and it's really going to work. So we'll start seeing some more of the great benefits of this program. So that's all.
Jim?
Well, let's see, Public Works Finance is pretty much all on the regular agenda. Friday was Arbor Day, and I went and read the Arbor Day proclamation for Mayor Lambert since he was off in the hinterlands, and we planted a tree out by the skate park that probably won't shade the skate park until I'm worm chow, but, but definitely it's planted there, and, and it was well-attended by the students from the middle school, and we went and looked at some of their artwork afterwards about Arbor Day and gave away some trees. So that went on, and then on Sunday, stood in for Mayor Lambert at the Habitat for Humanity dedication of the Lloyd Home over on Greenfield Place, and that was well-attended, and Palouse Patress gave a quilt to every member of the family, and, and there was some tears, and a lot of people showed up to, for the dedication of that house, and we found out that also there are two foundations gonna be put in for habitat houses in Potlatch this summer, so. Things are moving along there.
Thank you, Jim, for filling in for those two things, and for you and Catherine doing it this Saturday as well, so we're in there.
Art?
Tree commission met and had discussed the Arbor Day festivities, and so I'm glad to hear those went off well. They're also talking about putting on some tree pruning workshops and increase the number of those topics. Working on making recommendations to Parks and Rec and the city about the use of shade trees versus columnar trees in urban areas, the pluses and minuses of each of those, as well as replacing aging-out trees and encouraging those residences under the old tree ordinance about getting some trees out in front of their houses. And they're also talking about recommending urban food forests, putting in nut trees and things like that around town for people to be able to harvest those if they're in the city tree lawn, right-of-way areas. So they're working on those too, as well as putting together a revised tree planting guide for everyone. They meet again tomorrow, tomorrow evening if people want to show up. The rest of the stuff is coming up later in the month.
Very good. Walter, welcome back.
Thank you, sir. On Wednesday, the 26th, I attended the Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. There they discussed a legislative amendment to Title IV, Chapter VI regarding off-street parking requirements. They're making some revisions to, to that document that will be coming forward sometime in the near future. They also took a look at Chapters III and IV of the comprehensive plan updates, working their way through those. They got a little hung up on a proposal to, how to classify Third Street, and ended up requesting that Les come back to discuss D-Third and Sixth Streets in terms of the classifications of those, whether they be minor arterials or collectors, to help, help them understand what the, what the reasoning was there. On the 27th, I attended the Historic Preservation Commission. They went through a whole lot of topics. One is their Preservation Moscow Newsletter, annual document, they hope to get that out in September. Another is they're working on interpretive signage for the 1912 building, the city hall, and the library, and it's taken them longer than they thought, they, per, per the commission. They were, they were working on what their next steps are on that. They also are going to have Ray Pankoff from the university come to their meeting next month to talk about the possibility of a University of Idaho Historic District. And then they had an update on the Fort Russell Historic District, they're moving, that's moving along, it's in the hands of the SHPO right now down in Boise, and they're also going to, going to be looking at the comp plan section on historic preservation, so lots of things in the preservation business.
Thank you, Walter. On April 26th, I attended an airport board meeting, we talked about a number of different things, and, and finally getting a few things going out there with this wet, wet winter and spring, so it's kind of slow-going, but hopefully we'll be in full gear before long with that. Also, on the 20, April 26th, we had the PEP kickoff at the University of Idaho with our very own Gina Terusha as executive director for that, and every, one of us was pretty much there. That's a collaboration between the county and the university, and our city, and the chamber, and other communities without, within our county, so that's a big deal for us, and we're all anxious to see where that carries us, Gina, so. Good, with that, that's all I have. Gary, do you have anything you want to report?
Yes, we do. We're hosting the AIC Spring District Workshop. Mayor's on the Board of AIC, that will be out at Best Western. Also, on Wednesday, we have the monthly city, county, and university school district breakfast meeting, that'll be seven o'clock in the quiet room at, not the quiet room, it's at the Bob's Cafe up on campus. We also have, next week, we are also celebrating Public Service Recognition Week, so we will have our CHAMP's Awards, which are awards for city employees who meet are the best in certain categories, such as Rookie of the Year, Service Award, so on and so forth, so, and that'll be followed by our annual Public Service Recognition Week barbecue. Of course, council's all invited to do that as well. Get a chance to eat a delicious hamburger grilled by me, so.
Week from Thursday.
Love to see you there.
Excuse me? A week from Thursday?
Week from Thursday. So that will be at the Hamilton Indoor Rec Facility, so, hope to see you there.
Very good. I would entertain a motion to adjourn.
Let's go.
Second, all in favor?
Aye.
opposed? Meeting adjourned at 8:37. Thank you all.